Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Would everybody please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Corporal is joining us by Zoom this evening, so Ms. Hannah, would you please call roll?
Mr. Kiesak, Ms. Kane, Ms. Strauss.
Here.
Also in attendance tonight is Township Manager, Mr. Ratliff, Assistant Township Manager, Mr. Valla, Township Solicitor, Mr. Esposito, Township Engineer, Mr. Kiesler, Chief of Police, Joseph Barterillo, Police Captain, Pete Feeney, Director of Building and Zoning, Jim Ennis, Director of Finance, Laura Hucknbridge, Director of Public Works, Eric Gartenmeier.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Our next Board of Supervisors meeting will be Monday, August 11th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We have a few special items. The first is a proclamation designated in July as Parks and Recreation Month. Ms. Strauss?
Delighted to read this proclamation, recognizing July as Parks and Recreation Month in Middletown Township, whereas, launched in 1985, this year marks the 40th anniversary of Parks and Recreation Month, celebrating the essential role of parks and recreation in enhancing community health, wellness, and quality of life, and whereas parks and recreation promote physical and mental well-being, foster lifelong friendships and family bonds, and provide vital programming for youth, adults, and seniors in Middletown Township, and whereas parks, open spaces, and natural areas preserve the ecological beauty of our community and offer opportunities for recreation, education, and connection with nature, and whereas the 2025 theme, Build Together, Play Together, recognizes the dedication of over 160,000 full-time professionals and countless part-time seasonal and volunteer staff who support parks and recreation services nationwide. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors declares July as Parks and Recreation Month in Middletown Township and encourages all residents to enjoy, support, and celebrate the parks programs and services that enrich our community.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. And next we have a proclamation also designating July as Disability Pride Month. Ms. Hannah?
Thank you. Recognizing Disability Pride Month in Middletown Township, whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act, also known as ADA, was passed on July 26, 1990, to prohibit discrimination against people with disabilities and to ensure the rights of citizens with disabilities, and whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated nationally during the month of July to recognize the anniversary of the passage of this important legislation, and whereas the township of Middletown recognizes that one of its greatest strengths is the diversity of its people, and whereas disabled individuals contribute to our community's success and strength in an immeasurable number of ways, and whereas the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors created a Human Relations Commission in 2020 to express its commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion in our organization and our community, and now therefore be it proclaimed that the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors declares July as Disability Pride Month in Middletown Township and encourages the community to support inclusivity and the elimination of discriminatory practices.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Next, we are going to have a presentation from Chief of Police Joe Barterillo on the Blue Envelope Program. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Kiesak, members of the board. I'd like to take a few moments to highlight the launch of Project Blue Envelope. That is a new initiative by our police department aimed at improving interactions between law enforcement and individuals with autism. This program provides drivers with autism a clearly marked blue envelope, which I do have right here, to hold their license, registration, and insurance, along with helpful communication tips for both the driver and the officer, which would be the paper that would be contained inside the envelope. The goal is to create a safer, more predictable, and respectful experience during traffic stops or other police encounters. Several other police departments in Bucks County, at least half, so we're joining, you know, the other half of the departments in the county, and every department in Montgomery County have started this initiative, and we're now part of that group of police departments. This Project Blue Envelope Program was started in response to growing awareness of the challenges individuals with autism may face during high-stress interactions, especially those involving authority figures. For someone on the spectrum, even a routine traffic stop can be overwhelming. This program is an important step toward building trust, reducing fear or confusion during traffic stops, making sure everyone, especially those with autism, feel safe and understood when interacting with law enforcement. So in closing, just want to have a, make some brief recognitions. I want to recognize and acknowledge from our department Sergeant Matt Kreuz, Officer Melissa Robison, they oversaw the project for our department, designed the envelopes and the paperwork that go with it. I want to thank our Board Vice Chair, Bernadette Hannah, who was supportive of us taking on this initiative for our township and moving this project forward. And finally, I do want to acknowledge our District Attorney, Jen Shorn. She's been a strong advocate for Project Blue Envelope, and like Montgomery County, she is hoping to ensure that every police department in Bucks County adopts this program. So we are starting it effective today. We will message it on social media this week, and we're happy to join all the other departments in the county that already do Project Blue Envelope. So I have them here if anybody wants to see them after the meeting, happy to share it with you. So if you have any questions, here to answer them. If not, thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Chief.
Can I just say, I just want to say thank you so much. It's a program that is near and dear to my heart as a family member who has autism. It's very upsetting when they become dysregulated, and if you are not prepared and you don't understand what is happening, it can make the situation even worse. So when I approached you and asked you about it, and your department was already on it, I am so grateful for that, and I believe our community will be too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Thank you.
Thank you again, Chief. All right, that brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. This is public comment on non-agenda items only. We did utilize a sign-in sheet tonight, and the first individual on that list is Lance Sagers.
Good evening, Board. Lance Sagers, 98, Queen Lily. Just wanted to point out, previous meetings, I have discussed the school capacity studies in the Shammany School District just did, as well as the trend from over the last five to eight years. And in the last five years, about 1,000 kids increase in student population in the Shammany School District. The numbers in elementary schools are actually pretty stable, which tells us they're not kids that are being born here by Middletown Township. Typically, it's probably families moving in. So I'm going to bring it. I've been reading a lot about the school district, or the school board raising taxes 4.7%. Not really happy about it, but I don't believe the blame falls, in my opinion, on the school board. I believe the blame falls on this board, and I wanted our citizens in Middletown Township to understand why that blame should be directed here. Because when we overpopulate and we overbuild and we put the school board in a bad spot, then we blame the school board for raising taxes when they're doing what they should be doing. They have to hire more staff because they have more students. Staff costs money, which is driving these costs. I think me and other people have come up to this board, and we've discussed the overpopulation and the overbuilding that we've done over the last five years in Middletown Township, and for the most part, it has fallen on deaf ears. Okay? But I think we are now starting to see some real-world examples of why this is not sustainable. Okay? And we will continue to get these increases by our school board, as well as this board, who continue to levy more taxes and fees, like a stormwater fee, because of the decisions this board makes. Okay? The unfortunate part about all of these taxes is, for the most part, it's not increasing services. We are not, as a school district, or even as a board, making Middletown better. Our kids aren't getting a better education. We are literally just sustaining the current level of education that we're getting, if not getting worse, in the Shammany School District, a good school district. So I want to leave that there. I hope that people at home are listening. I hope the people in this room are listening, because we do have an election coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sagers. Next on the list is Ted. I apologize, Ted, I can't read your handwriting for your last name because of the W. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Ted Robleski, and I apologize, my comments are on an agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Next, for public comment, we have William Burkett, I believe it is. I don't know if I, trouble reading the handwriting, sorry. First name is William, 2001 West Lincoln Highway.
Yes, I was, the subject hasn't come up yet, but I was here about the water runoff bill, and how, how it's going to be enforced and whatnot. We got, we got a bill for $7,215 for water runoff, and we want to know how they're going to make this work. We're, we're on a federal highway with no curbing. The water runs in. We have to do something to stop the erosion. We have to put stone down to stop the erosion. We don't have any control over that, and the township doesn't have any control over it. On the other side of the street, we have a federal railroad. All that runs in. Then behind that, we have a quarry, which is controlled by the DEP. You have no control over that. And after the quarry, you have another federal highway. We're at the bottom end of the hill. We don't have any control over what's coming in and running on our property, but we have to deal with it. And they're, they want to charge me for putting gravel down. I don't have gravel or stone. I have erosion. It just washes away. It just can't be that. They have, they either have to control the water coming in, where I don't have to take defensive methods to be able to use the ground, or we have to be able to use the ground and not give a $7,000 bill for water runoff.
Is, this is a commercial property?
Yes.
Okay. I, I can't speak specifically to your property, because I'm, without seeing your, your bill and the amount of impervious surface, I can't get into the specifics of your property. I can tell you that we were at the beginning of this process. The first step was creating a commission that ultimately recommended the stormwater fee, which was recently levied. The next part of the process is, and we're going to undertake this tonight, forming a stormwater committee to start looking at areas of concern around the township, prioritizing them, and figuring out how to use the funding, which we have, to address some of the stormwater concerns. So I apologize that I'm not prepared to address your specific concern tonight, but we can certainly talk about it in the future, and I can just represent to you that this is, this is what we're trying to do. We're trying to improve the situation across the township going forward.
I'll be waiting to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, I just want to note that the gentleman did reach out to the township. The appeals process, as it stands now, is for when folks reach out, we'll go and look at the property. As you mentioned, if it's a non-residential property, the way the stormwater fee is set up is a tiered system that caps at 6,000 currently, related to the impervious coverage, and that's defined per the township ordinance. But we did start looking at the property, and that's more than one parcel there, and that appeals process, we'll, we'll go through and review with the township to follow up.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have on the list, but is there anybody else here who has public comment on a non-agenda item? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Item A, consideration of authorizing payment of July 14th, 2025 bills list, in the amount of $2,971,487.83. And item B, consideration of approving the June 9th, 2025 minutes of the public meeting of the Middletown Township Board of Supervisors. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as they're stated.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane, who's been a motion in a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries 5-0. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for a petition on behalf of Richard J. Nudel Jr. and Lee Ann Nudel for Middletown Township to vacate Paper Street, known as Arch Street, formerly Ash Avenue, tax map parcels number 22-012-0, or rather 342, and 22-012-492. Mr. Esposito?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kiesak. So as you mentioned, we're going to hold a public hearing for a consideration of a petition to vacate a portion of a paper street, known as Arch Avenue, formerly known as Ash Avenue. The petitioners are Richard Nudel Jr. and Lee Ann Nudel. The property owned by the petitioners that abuts the portion of the paper street to be vacated is located at 614 Eagle Lane, Langhorne, Pennsylvania, known as tax, tax map parcel numbers 22-012-492 and 22-012-342. The hearing was properly advertised by public notice in the Bucks County Courier-Times on July 1st and July 6, 2025, and the other abutting property owners were notified in writing by the township 10 days ago. Before I allow the petitioner's attorney to start, I just want to introduce into evidence the board exhibits. We're going to label as Exhibit B1, the petition to vacate Paper Street with exhibits received by the township on June 2, 2025. We'll label, label as Exhibit B2, the notice documents, including the public news, notice to the newspaper, the affidavit of publication from the Bucks County Courier-Times, and the letter to the abutting property owners. We'll label as Exhibit B3, the plan exhibit showing the area of Arch Avenue requested to be vacated. If there's no objection to those exhibits, I'll let Mr. Sacco move forward with the petition.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Russ Sacco, and I represent Rich and Lee Ann Nudel with respect to this petition to vacate a portion of Arch Avenue. Mr. Esposito, I do have another exhibit that I think may provide a lot of clarity for the board, and it's going to be up on the screen momentarily. That's the Google map exhibit.
And we can label this exhibit as P1.
P1. Can I approach to that?
Yes.
So before you, as a petition to vacate a portion of Arch Street, as indicated in the introduction, my clients own 16, 614 Eagle Lane, and the parcel directly across the street from Eagle Lane, which you'll get a better idea from the map. If, so if you would, if you would take a look at where that's being circled, that's my client's property, and across the street is the, is his, is their vacant parcel. Arch Avenue is a paper street just because that's what it is. It's been, never been developed. It's just on paper. And it runs to the east of both their properties, and then it stops. If you go to the north of their property, there was a development in the 1980s, I believe, or the 90s, which vacated Arch Street, and because Arch Street is actually incorporated into the Nudels' deeds, when the parcels to the north got vacated, the parcels encompassed all of Arch Street. So typically, in a petition to vacate, one half would go to one property owner on one side, one half on the other. What we're seeking in this petition is just to vacate Arch Street and show it on the map as belonging to the Nudel, since it's incorporated in their deed. As was done, if you, if you have the petition in front of you, Exhibit D, which, I don't know if you could go to the, the actual petition, and I have Mr. Nudel here to verify all the facts, too. I just wanted to put it in context to, to make it a little bit clearer. So on the petition to, to vacate, there is an Exhibit D, which is the tax map, and if you were able to pull that up. So if you take a look at Arch Street, again, just on paper, they're my client's parcels. You go to the north, that was a prior development in the 90s, I believe it was the Luca Development, and Arch Street got vacated just to the north of my client's properties. And the parcels actually, as shown on the map, they encompass what was formerly Arch Street. So my client is seeking is just the same exact process, to vacate Arch Street, since it's no longer used, and have that portion allocated to his parcels. On the map, as indicated, they're already, if you look at the legal descriptions in the deed, they all already carry out to the northeast section of Arch Street. So they're already encompassed in the deed, much like I believe the prior DeLuca lots were. The property, the, the street's never been developed. The parcels to the east, access obviously through Valley Road, my clients will be able to access and continue to access on Eagle Lane. So this is not going to create any type of landlocked properties. As indicated, I have Mr. Nudel here, who would probably verify what I said, but I didn't know if you wanted him sworn in. Mr. Esposito did in fact do that?
If you, if you have any questions for him, or if the board has any questions for him, we can certainly, certainly swear him in. I did want to mention to the board, I did review the, the deeds that were attached to the petition and the, the plans, and the prior ordinance that vacated the portion of the paper street that was to the north with those properties, and I can verify that. It is how Mr. Sacco said.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Sacco, or does anybody have a need to have Mr. Nudel sworn in to answer questions? No questions? All right, well, it appears to me that vacating this paper street would not affect any other landowners, and also taking into account that it was already vacated for other landowners in the neighborhood. I will make a motion to approve the petition of Richard and Lee Ann Nudel to, and to adopt the ordinance to vacate a portion of the paper street known as Arch Avenue that abuts TMP numbers 22-012-492 and 22-012-342 pursuant to the plan exhibits, exhibits that were attached to the petition. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. There's been a motion and a second. Are there any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Sacco.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right, next on the agenda is consideration of the petition on behalf of ELU DeLuca SB Middletown LLC to rezone TMP number 22-031-024 and AQCC, Age Qualified Community Zoning District, and consideration of preliminary subdivision and land development approval for Farms Edge. Mr. Murphy?
Good evening. We were last in front of this body on May 12th, so a little over two months ago, and that evening, we presented to you at the time was the latest iteration of the preliminary subdivision and land development plan for the project that we've referred to as Farms Edge at Shady Rock. We had, prior to that night, as I think you know from our earlier appearances before May, had engaged extensively a lot of the abutting property owners and communities to the project to gauge their input into what they thought of the pros and cons of the project as we were developing it, and that night in May, we received even more comments from individual board members, as well as the public, about continued issues that Joe Morrissey and his staff have, were aware of. aware of and were continued to work on. Since that night, in the intervening two months since we were last here, Joe and his staff have continued to do that. And we've had a series of further meetings with staff and others, the adjacent communities and individual property owners, in an effort to continue to address the issues that we've heard about. So the opportunity for us tonight is to allow Joe to present to you the latest plan, which we think has been more responsive than the earlier plans to a lot of the issues that we've heard about. The metrics to the plan have been significantly altered in terms of reducing density, reducing impervious surface, increasing capacity for managing stormwater, increasing both the distance and quality of the buffers, abutting those individual neighbors and communities that have been actively participating throughout the process. So we'd like the opportunity for Joe to summarize for you the progress we've made in the last 60 days or so and gauge your reaction to it. And as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, what's in front of you would be a motion to consider approval of the preliminary subdivision and land development plan based on what you hear this evening. So with that, I'll ask Joe to summarize where we are quickly, referring to where we were back in May and where we are tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Morrissey?
Good evening, thanks, thanks for having me again. I'm going to ask John Rathon to pass out all the plans that are on the PowerPoint, because the PowerPoint only has one plan at a time. I figured the board might want to see them up against each other, just so you have it. Give John one second to, to get through there. And then there's also the table that just kind of compares our active adult plan versus what we were considering to do if it was a buy right, single family plan. So when we were here back in May, this was the last plan you saw, which was 150 carriages, 34 foot by 75 foot deep, trail through the middle, clubhouse, swimming pool, pickleball courts, and a bunch of different open space, different kind of gardens and different kind of meadows kind of throughout the neighborhood. And when we were here in May, you know, we heard a bunch of different comments, but one of them was just the overall density, thinking that the 150 units just felt too much for the 53 acres that were on the plan. So we went back kind of to the drawing board and we actually did eight different layouts between an all single family plan, carriage and twins, carriage and singles, carriage twins and singles, twins and singles, all different variations to try to come up. And we had our whole conference room and kind of just cutting and pasting and trying to come up with a plan that we thought felt really good. And at the end of it, this one is the one that we felt probably the best about. When we were here in, in May, besides the density, there was the kind of conversation about open space. And a couple of really nice things about this plan, whether you compare it to the old plan, or you compare it to the buy right, single family plan, is this plan gets us 21.4 acres of open space, which is just, just over 40% of the total space is going to be open space, which doesn't include the stormwater management ponds, which would actually make that number bigger. Our plan is not to make the ponds feel like stormwater management ponds. We want them to make, make them feel more like Penswood Village, more like kind of natural buffers as you, you kind of walk through the neighborhood. The other thing that was important to the board was trying to get the impervious in line with what the buy right, single family plan. So buy right, single family is 30% impervious allowed. This plan that you see here is 29.64%. So we're able to get under that 30% threshold. Max building coverage was a big thing as well. We were able to get max building coverage with this plan down to 14.70. If we did the buy right, single family plan, we would have been allowed up to 15%. Tax revenue, and I know someone had kind of mentioned it earlier, tax revenue overall for this plan is roughly about 1.8 million. The buy right plan is about 274,000. I have a little bit more detail, I won't go into too much detail for it, but from a tax revenue, both for the township, the county, and obviously the school district, this plan ends up being a much, you know, much, it'll, it'll help a lot with their budgeting purposes with the active adult plan compared to the buy right, single family plan. The privacy and the buffers, shockingly, I would make the argument that this plan allows us to buffer the Villas of Shady Brook and Silver Lake a little bit more, and then if the future of whatever happens in Newtown Township that abuts Farms Edge to the north, mainly because all our units are footprint ownership, which means that the homeowner only owns their foundation. There won't be any sheds, there won't be any swimming pools, there won't be any sport courts, there won't be any trampolines. It allows us to give a lot of open space between our properties and obviously the properties around us. I think this is our third time in front of the board, and one of the very first times we had homes kind of all along the property, even up against Silver Lake and the Villas of Shady Brook. And we ended up moving a lot of those units away from that to be able to allow to buffer that as much as possible. So this allows us to do even more. It allows us to give us more green space in the middle with the trails and everything that ties in. It just makes it what I feel a much better plan. The connectivity, the, the walking trail, which was always kind of important for the township. When we met with the Parks and Rec and we drove around with Paul that day, and hearing it from a couple of the Silver Lake residents as well, was figuring out a way to connect Middletown as much as possible is always a huge win. The number one factor, and I won't speak for Paul, but in our conversation that day is if you go from Silver Lake across Village Road into Township Park there, it's pretty dangerous. So right now, most people will get across the street at some point into the cemetery and then the chain link fence is kind of pulled back there and then they kind of walk through Township. Talking to some of the Silver Lake neighbors, they said it's, it's dangerous of adults, but it's definitely dangerous for kids. So what I want to represent to the board and what I represented to Township staff is that we're going to, we're willing to contribute up to 200,000, which should be more than enough, to figure out a way to safely connect Silver Lake from Village Road up to Township Park and then be able to connect the park on the other side. We just think it'd be kind of a nice, hopefully win for the Township and, and a win for Silver Lake. Housing demand was just kind of the overall, from an overall unit standpoint, these are active adults, no school age kids. But having said that, most of our buyers are probably going to be coming within a three to five mile radius, not necessarily all from Middletown Township, but probably from Lower Make in Newtown, which obviously opens up housing stock in other segments, meaning that someone that's buying our homes are most likely selling a single family home that they've been in for 20 or 30 years, which that allows that home to be bought by somebody moving from a townhome and kind of go from there. So overall, based on location, all the other stuff, I think you'll see kind of the synergies as people buy our homes and the, and some of the housing supply that opens up with that. The climate action plan, I know is very important to Middletown Township. We sent a letter to Jim just representing that we will happily, with all the, you know, low flow toilets and energy efficiency, open, offering solar power to all of our customers, electric car chargers in all the garages, you know, thermostats, garage doors, everything that can be controlled by the phones. It's going to be kind of a lock it and leave it lifestyle, but very, is minimal impact on the environment as we possibly can. And then traffic, you know, kind of the, the good and bad. The traffic is the one thing between this plan and what I would call the, the buy right, single family plan is probably a little bit up. Over the last two months, we actually studied the traffic coming out of the Villas of Shady Brook, obviously same buyer profile, right down the street. If we use the Shady Brook numbers compared to the number of units that'll be at Farms Edge, we estimate that the traffic difference between a buy right, single family plan with 32 single families and our 129 carriages, mixture of singles, twins and, and carriages, there'll be roughly one additional car for every 5.5 minutes. So it's, from that standpoint, not a huge effect, definitely more than the buy right plan, but overall not, not a huge difference. I just did a quick slide here and I won't go into too much detail unless you feel like you, you want to go into detail, but we talked about the fiscal impact, kind of the buy right, and it just breaks down the county, township and school district, total tax revenue by, by right, single family plan, and then the proposed age restricted with 129 active adult, and then just kind of the breakdown. Total tax revenue is 213,000 for the county, 223 for the township, 1.4 million for the school district, for a total of 1.8. So roughly 1.59 million difference between the two tax revenues. And then the buy right, just the one time fee, ends up being 630,000 for the township just in transfer tax. Ed had kind of mentioned it, but we've had, you know, what I would call a really good working relationship besides with the township, but also with the Villas of Shady Brook and with the Silver Lake neighbors. And like any negotiation, you're trying to come up with some kind of win-win situation that obviously, you know, works for them, works for the township, works for the Flemings and, and works for us. And overall, when we kind of looked at the different ways of kind of meeting through most everything, I feel like we've come to some kind of conclusion that I think we're all kind of on the same page. But I just want to put something in the public record, so you guys had it, just so everyone's on the same page. Tom Morelli is one of the Silver Lake residents. We had talked about before, he's had kind of a wetlands issue because he's got water coming, like water runoff from the farm. He's right next to the Lichtenstein property. We've committed to him, we'll figure out the stormwater to make sure that we keep all the Farms Edge stormwater on our property and alleviate his problem. He's been great to deal with, and if there's stuff above and beyond that we could do for Tom, we'd love to be able to do that. Ted and Teresa, they live on Silver Lake. They actually backed to the apple orchards at, at Farms Edge or Shady Brook. They have a beautiful view, they have a beautiful house, they have a beautiful backyard. And I understand that, you know, not that we're ever going to be perfect, us building homes behind them, but we've committed to them that we'll come up with a way to try to shield it as best we could. We met with a landscape architect out there earlier this week, just trying to come up with some ideas, and I do think we'll be able to come up with some. It doesn't mean they're in favor of the, the neighborhood, I'm just committing that even after whatever happens tonight down the road, we're committed to come up with a plan that hopefully Ted and Teresa will be happy about as well. Megan White is, actually lives in Amy Fleming's old house, which is the house up on Chilton Place that the emergency access would be right next to. Megan's been great through the whole process, a lot of back and forth. She does not love the emergency access up next to her property. So in a perfect world, she would love the emergency access to be in a different location. Having said that, that's when we first met with the fire marshal, that's where they wanted, so that's where we put it. If it ends up being there, we just committed to her that we'd come up with a way to make it not feel like an emergency access, make it feel like it's more of a trail, probably eight foot wide of asphalt and then grass, grass pavers on, on both sides. And I even committed to her, because a couple of the concerns with Silver Lake was, hey, would people from outside Silver Lake park there and then walk into Shady Brook and for the light shower and the other stuff? We committed to her that we could probably do some, something with fencing to give that a little bit more of a residential feel, so it looks like you're coming into somebody's property. The Silver Lake people would know, but anybody from the outside probably wouldn't. So we committed to kind of work with them to figure out something that way as well. The Villas at Shady Brook, we committed that if we get preliminary plan approval, that in the fall, we'd met with some neighbors there that are probably the most exposed, we'd probably get some landscaping installed in the fall to get some growth. So by the time this plan actually gets to fruition, you know, we're, we're kind of good that way, at least a little bit farther along. So we're committed to them. They, I know, had sent an email slash letter, I think maybe to Jim Ennis, with kind of their list of what we agreed to. And I just want to put on record that we do agree to everything that they had in that letter. And then last and probably not least, but there's probably 60 neighbors between the Villas of Shady Brook and Silver Lake that abut our property. We just said, we've met with a bunch of them, there's still a bunch more that we could meet with. We just said, hey, if we get through and we're lucky enough to get preliminary plan approval, at some point in September, we'll set up a meeting, probably two or three separate days, and we'll bring everybody out that abuts our property, just to look at all the landscaping, the headlights, just to make sure that we have everything covered. So just want to put that out on the record as well. I know Ed, you want to talk about Lower Make? So obviously with our plan, we are going to need access for Middletown parcel of our property out to Lower Make. So we know and we understand that, you know, if we're lucky enough to get preliminary plan approval here, we know we have to go through the same process with Lower Make and be able to get, you know, approval for them to be able to have that access out to Township Line Road. So we're, we're totally fine with that. So last thing I'll leave it with and then I'll open for questions, but looking back at my emails, we started this early January of 2024, which is shocking how quickly it goes. And I do feel like we've had a lot of good back and forth between the supervisors, between the Township staff, Villas of Shady Brook, Silver Lake. And I feel really good that we've come up with a plan that I think could be a really, really, really nice community for the next 30, 50, 80 years. I think the probably even better part of that is, I think if this ends up happening, I think it probably ensures that, you know, Shady Brook, the farm itself, will be around for the next 50, 80, 100 years. So I think it's a, it's a win-win on that standpoint, and I think it'll be a beautiful neighborhood if you guys, you know, hopefully feel the same way. So with that, I will open up to questions.
Questions for Mr. Morrissey? Are there any residents here who have questions for Mr. Morrissey or would like to make a public comment? Come on up to the microphone. Everybody? Yeah, just come on up, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Megan White. I live at 297 Chilton Place in Amy's old house. Of course, my house is one of the homes most impacted, along with Ted's, as our houses are adjacent to the proposed development. I was out of the country for the last meeting, but to forward some emails to you in opposition of the development, primarily due to the density issues. Thank you, Dana, for responding. With that said, Farms Edge, particularly Joe, has been in contact with myself, as he has mentioned, and others. And although there are less houses, units, the proposed changes include five units close to mine from the east that were not as close originally. And while the density has slightly improved from what was initially presented, the overall number of units, houses is still very overwhelming. I will remind everyone that this will have an impact, and I will remind everyone, despite turning the other way, that there is, there will be an additional impact from the development in Lower Makefield for the additional commercial buildings that will be proposed thereafter. With that said, we have lost a significant amount of green space in our township. Builders continually, continuously push for rezoning by developers wanting higher density than currently zoned, and this is no different. The plans remain unnecessarily dense. In addition, as Joe has mentioned, is a topic of the emergency access. This is right in front of my house. I request this be reviewed once again, as it makes absolutely no sense to have it come through Silver Lake. As I've stated before, and will reiterate, emergency vehicle response time is critical and vehicles can be affected by which they need to travel, the surrounding environment, whether it's the roadways or children at play. For anyone who has driven into the development of Chilton Place or vice versa, this is not easy. It is a series of turns, passing parked cars and children, people walking their animals, that would be more of a concern for me when in fact there is an alternative. Another topic is that of the trail. I don't know necessarily where that stands today. I will continue to suggest the trail be placed elsewhere, perhaps in more of a central location in which the entire development would be beneficial in alignment with the trail that has been discussed in the past along Village Road. Most of the neighbors do not want it at the end of Chilton Place. Yes, this is obviously an impact to me more directly, since once again, it's in front of my house, but it's my responsibility to provide a place I feel safe in. The exposure of a trailer in front of my house does not do that. I've been to a handful plus of township meetings, primarily to hear about future land developments as well as parks and recreation. What I've heard from previous meetings is that the board notes that they want to have people want to live here. And it's part of the board's responsibility to make that happen. I don't necessarily disagree, but not at others' expenses. Furthermore, what I know or read about Middletown Township, the township I resigned in, is that the township strives to be sustainable community by incorporating principles of sustainability. This includes addressing vital services like parks and public safety, while focusing on community health and quality of life issues. The township is also actively involved in preserving the environment. It aims to be vibrant and welcoming community by promoting public health, safety, and the general welfare of its residents. The township focuses on practical community development, emergency management and preserving natural resources while also addressing issues like overcrowding, blight, and traffic congestion. Therefore, in closing, I strongly ask you to please take that into consideration, and not solely on the monetary benefits, but how this will impact the very same people who have invested their lives into this community and made Middletown Township their home. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morrissey, do you just want to specifically address two of the things that were raised? I guess the emergency access at Chilton Place, and then also the trail and the location of a potential trail?
Sure. Let me just come over here real quick. So give you the quick rundown. Megan lives right here, so right now, the emergency access comes right here. When we did the plan, and we met with the fire marshal, this was his preferred location. We also have a secondary option to run emergency access out this way and kind of just north of the 777 entrance. It really doesn't matter to us, and what I had said to Megan the other day is, you know, we're obviously only going for preliminary plan, we still probably have another six, nine, 12 months to get to final plan approval, and we could kind of work that stuff out, you know, with the township engineer and kind of working through that. We're good either way, whatever works, you know, for the township and the fire marshal, and obviously the neighbors, works for us. But you could do the fire, you could do the emergency access either way, and we believe it would, it would work, but you just need to get the input from the, from the fire marshal.
Okay.
So that was number one. Trail-wise, we have the trail kind of coming through the center. If you remember, one of our very early plans was to potentially do a trail kind of through here and then back, and then potentially tie into Core Creek Park. We realized with the creek bed kind of going down through here, it just didn't make sense. So at this time, we pretty much just have the sidewalk and the trail coming through here, and then kind of up this way, and then connecting around. So there's nothing that really, other than the emergency access, would allow you to do a trail. You know, the one thing where Megan and I probably differ, and I think you would have some Silver Lake residents, say, they would love the option to be able to, be able to walk through here and then go up to Shady Brook and either grab a drink, or grab something to eat, or stop in the Little Proto Center. So my guess is, but I, Megan's more affected than most everybody else. And then the only thing I said to Megan when we went, you know, kind of talking through this, there's going to be a lot of landscaping that goes in here to try to buffer her property through everything else, and we would do everything we can. I think most people love trails, most people don't love trails right next to their house. So if there's something over the next, you know, six, nine months, as we're going through the engineering process, that we could come up with something that works for Megan and obviously works for the township, we're completely open to doing that.
And I think just for context for everybody, what, what you're seeking tonight is, is obviously the ordinance, but also preliminary approval, so there still is some more process to go through before you come back for a final approval of whatever the plan looks like.
Yeah, we're expecting there's a bunch more meetings with the Villas of Shady Brook, there's still meetings with Silver Lake, obviously township staff, but yeah, there's still a fair amount of the process still left.
Other public comment or questions? Come on up and state your name. Yep.
Hi, Ted Robleski, 209 Chilton Road, Langhorne. I abut up to the development there. We're pleased that the density of the development has been decreased from the original plans, and that the owners and developers of the property have been open and willing to work with the neighbors, neighborhood's concerns. But we are still of the opinion that the development has too many units with not enough setback from existing homes. While the density of the development has been decreased from the previous plan, it was decreased to the benefit of future residents of the development by removing units from the center of the development, and not with respect to current neighboring residents. The residents of Villas of Shady Brook and the four bordering properties on Chilton Road, one of which is me, bear the density of the development and also have the least amount of setback from the new development. There are 73 three- and four-unit townhouse structures, each unit being approximately 3,000 square feet with over two-story height, south of the wooded area, as close as 103 feet to existing neighbors. So that's the houses along that south side of the woods there. And in reality, with decks and patios on both my house and any new house, they're even closer than that. To the north of the wooded area are 53 singles and a few twins with over 300 feet of separation from Silver Lake and the open land to the north. Why is the densest part of the development so close to current neighbors? We are most upset having a three-unit structure, which is the one in the lower left-hand corner Thank you, Joe. And I'm directly behind that. So close to us. Think of it as a 9,000 square foot home directly behind us. I have asked the developer, Joe, throughout the process to move that unit further away from our property, but have been told no several times. This structure in particular negatively impacts our home and how we built onto it to enjoy the outdoor space behind us, is why we have lived there for 40 years. We also strongly prefer the emergency access not be in Silver Lake and be moved to Township Line Road to avoid emergency vehicles in our narrow streets, and Megan covered that well. Also, that the planned access from Silver Lake ties directly to the planned Farms Edge walking path, which accesses Shady Brook Farms entertainment events. We remain concerned that walking access to entertainment events from our neighborhood will invite parking in our neighborhood for entertainment events at Shady Brook to avoid the traffic on Stony Hill Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morrissey, any, anything you want to address in the gentleman's comments?
Trying to think the right way to say this. So Ted and Teresa have a beautiful house, they have a beautiful backyard, just want to show you here real quick. And I totally get why they want to make sure it stays. And if you remember, when we first did our very first plan, we had homes all along here and all along here. When we, you know, the first rendition or second rendition is, we took all the homes off of that to be able to buffer it, and to Ted's, these are the most affected, and then these homes up here are kind of most affected. So that's why we did some additional landscaping here. It's not so much that if I could just easily move units around, but this site is limited because you have a creek running through the middle, you have all the wetlands buffers, you have a lot of stormwater, because we're going to try to obviously take care of all the stormwater issues in the surrounding areas. So it's not where you could just pick off one or two units and put it somewhere else. We tried to just be really smart about where we put it. So I wouldn't say, I wouldn't classify it that I told Ted and Teresa, no, we wouldn't move it, it just, if there was a spot. Now, what I would commit to is, as we go through final engineering, if there's a way, each unit's 34 feet wide, or if we could shrink this down a little bit, if there were a way we could get him a little more feet, I think, Ted, you're 262 or 275 feet, 262? So if we could figure out a way to get him another 30 feet and be able to do something here, we're totally committed to do that, and we're happy to do it. The other part of it is, is right now, they have a pretty apple orchard in the back. We did commit when we met with the landscape architect last week, and she felt pretty confident that we could come up with a pretty nice landscape package to be able to, you know, there's always going to be homes behind you, but we could come up with some things to be able to make it look better sooner. And we committed to them, the same thing that we committed to the Villas of Shady Brook, that if there was a way to do some landscaping earlier in the process, like the fall of this year, to give it a chance to grow and get established before we get in, you know, we would happily do that as well. But there's a lot of landscaping that's going to go through here, and like I said, it's homes versus a farm, you know, we're never going to win that, but I feel very confident that when it's all said and done and the homes are built, that Ted and Teresa will realize it's not as bad as maybe what they're envisioning right now.
Any other public comment? Yep.
Tom Morelli, 203 Chilton Place. I don't have a prepared statement, I didn't plan one, but I just wanted to make a comment. One, I definitely agree with Megan, I would like to see the emergency exit moved over to where the 777 building is, if that's possible. I think response time is a major, major problem when you're having emergency issues, and trying to go through a neighborhood where you have children and park the vehicles on the street. And remember, we use our streets to walk in, we don't have sidewalks, nor do we want sidewalks. You know, we walk the dogs and we walk around all the streets in the neighborhood, and it's great, but then to just have emergency vehicles rush down there, hopefully it'll never be needed, but when they are, that's probably going to be pretty dangerous to do. As far as the trails go, you know, I personally liked the idea of the trail, but if it makes others in the neighborhood feel uncomfortable and unsafe, I am for getting rid of them. I don't have a problem with that. They're not all that important to me, it seemed like a, a nice feature to have, but I don't mind walking around the entire Village Road and all the way up if I want to go, go over to see the, the shopping centers there. It's a better walk, I mean, the whole idea of walking is to get the steps anyway, so I don't need a trail to do that. I appreciate that they're willing to put out some money to put a, a path over to the community park, because I am one of those folks that have to, because I help to monitor the buildings for the Middle Town Township, and the barn is one of those. So usually, instead of driving over to there, if Paul Capera calls me and asks me to go to the barn, I just walk through, but you're walking through the cemetery, which isn't really appropriate anyway, and then you're going over a hole in the fence, and then walking up a bunch of weeds and all to get to the barn, and it's, it's nice that they're willing to, to put a contribution to building that. I got to tell you that these guys have been great to work with. Joe and John have been terrific to work with, they've been, I've worked with other developers at different places and for my, for my job, and they've been very difficult, many totally unresponsive. These guys have been, have been good to work with. My main concern personally is, as Joe pointed out, I'm a 203 Chilton, so I'm that last house over there near the Liechtenstein's property, and I get that major water runoff from the farm. I mean, it is just sheets of water runoff of there, although Paul's done a good job recently of trying to prevent some of that. He's bulldozed some, some dirt into the area and made some, some barriers, which have helped a lot, but we need more permanent solution. Next, I hope we do something with the Liechtenstein's property, that would be good too. I just had to pay to have seven trees removed that were falling from their property onto mine, and it's, it's a pain, because they don't respond when you, when you need something, which is why we asked the townships for help for that previously. But I would like to do something with the emergency exit, and again, the trails, as one resident, they, they're not important, if we want to get rid of those, that'd be fine. So, that's all.
Thank you. Other public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, Ryan Rybicki, 285 Chilton. Apologize only, I missed a good portion of the beginning, but I just wanted to come up and just say that I am Megan White's neighbor, and I know she came up and spoke already, and I just wanted to say on my behalf, whatever she has said, I fully back. We have talked numerous occasions, and we are on the same page, so I just wanted to lend my support that whatever she came up and spoke, I fully agree with, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, I'm not seeing any. You know, look, the, the thing that I think we, we have to talk about is the fact that this property is zoned RA1, and so this is not a choice between building residences and preserving open space, because as it currently is zoned, homes could be built there now, single-family homes. And so what we are tasked with deciding as a board is, do we keep the zoning as it is and allow single-family homes, or do we change the zoning to what has been proposed, which are age-qualified carriage homes? And there's a lot to consider, but I think it is, it needs to be clear to the community that this isn't a choice between preserving undeveloped open space and building homes. It's, there are, there's, there are homes that are going to be built here, it's a question of what kind of homes and what the character of those homes will be, and ultimately the density of those units. I think there are, in my mind, a few things that make the proposal for the zoning change appealing. The first is the open space, the, the amount of open space that will be preserved by moving to age-restricted as opposed to single-family is significant. It's like a 40% open space preservation with the age-restricted community. The other thing that I think is important is, when you have single-family homes, you are necessarily projecting to have school-aged children. When you have age-restricted, for these homes, the projected number of school-aged children being added to the district is zero. In addition, the tax revenue that will be generated for the school district is significantly more than it would be with the single-family homes. So to Mr. Sager's point earlier, I think this actually checks both of the boxes that he raised, which is, we are potentially adding more revenue to the school district, and we are not adding any more children. Whereas the zoning as it is currently constructed would potentially add less tax revenue, and it would add some significant number of children. So that is a benefit, at least in my mind. And I think for me, something that is really important, and I think is worth commenting on, is the effort that Mr. Morrissey and his colleagues have gone to, to work with the neighbors, to try to find a plan that is maybe not ideal, maybe not preferable to what exists now, and I get that certainly, but they have gone to great lengths to try to decrease density. I mean, the density as it stands compared to where the plan was originally, it's been a significant decrease, and the, the buffers that have been put in to try to improve or at least maintain quality of life for the residents that are going to be most affected, that's commendable, and it's appreciated by at least me that you've made all of those efforts. So that, those are my thoughts, those are my feelings. I'll allow my colleagues an opportunity to speak if they would like to.
I just want to say, we've spent probably hours over the past couple of months talking about this, so I just want to say, I really appreciate that you met with me, one, knowing my stance on open space and where I stand, and really, you know, impervious, that was one of my, my call-outs, the building coverage, you're within those, traffic, again, it's, it's kind of a, you know, you're still talking about 129 houses, which will have two cars, which will be having people come in and out. So regardless of what peak and non-peak does, my one concern here that still gives me pause is, what's happening with the rest of the development, right? It feels like we are looking at this in a, in a silo, where there's all of the building and commercialization that's going to occur on the Lower Makefield, and what will ultimately happen with the new town? So I'm more concerned around, what does this look like once everything's developed? I think we're kind of, we should be coming at it at the same point, but I don't think anything's been presented to Lower Makefield yet. Lower Makefield has concerns with this that I don't think we've addressed yet. So I'm really, you know, I'm concerned that we are giving up a lot by 32 versus 129 units, and not getting a lot of insurances that going forward, we could, we'll still see farmland at Shady Brook. It is one of the greatest assets. I adore looking at it, I love driving by it, I love visiting it on a consistent basis. So I would, I really was, was hoping that we would be able to have a win-win like we had with Stone Farm, where we would get some conservation and we'd get development, and it's unfortunate that we couldn't get there.
I would tell you, and Dana, obviously we, you know, went back and forth on a couple of different things, Stone Farm is definitely a different deal than this for a lot of different reasons, but what I will tell you is, when you look at the plans compared, whether it's 32, and 32 what would fit, I think by right, it's probably 43 or 44 single-family homes, but if you talk about like overall impact to the township, and, you know, the active adult or the buyer profiles that you want in your township, because they, they shop local, they buy local, they, you know, they go to doctors, they're not having loud parties, and traffic, they're, they're not going to work between 7:00 and 9:00, like it just, it's a different flexibility, and like the Villas of Shady Brook is the perfect example. You drive through there, it's perfectly manicured, the flowers are beautiful, all the homes are beautiful, like we're just looking to take something like a Villas of Shady Brook and add addition, and, and the one, I totally get the whole density aspect of it, but density in that location for what it does is a huge win for the surrounding, because it does open up homes for other people in the surrounding townships, you know, so there's, there's a huge win that way. And, you know, I, I can't speak for the Flemings, but we've spent a lot of time with the Flemings over the last year and a half. The thought process is, after four generations, they're trying to figure out, hey, what does the family need to do for the next generation? And the thought process is, if we could work this out on the Middle Town piece, it probably, never say guarantee anything, but the, the likelihood that Shady Brook's around for another 50, 80, 100 years is much more likely if we can do this. Now, your, your whole thought on the Lower Makefield stuff, obviously, we're partnerships with Envision on the Middle Town stuff, we're not technically partnerships on the Lower Makefield, but I understand the concern with that, and, you know, that's something that will have to work out. The only other thing I just want to kind of put out there, just to the general board, with, you know, what Megan said, and with what Ted said, or Tom, or Ryan, like, we're not thinking that if we're lucky enough to get preliminary plan tonight, like we're done. We realize there's still a process through this, and I'm, I'm 100% confident, probably 98% confident, that by the time we're done with everything with Ted and Teresa, and with Megan and Ryan, and like, they're going to be happy, because there's been a lot of times in, in John- been a lot of times, and John Rathin gets a lot of credit for this, that we go into townships and they're always, hey, we don't want this, or this and that, and then we come up with a compromise that, that works, and at the end of it, the township usually loves our, our, our developments, the neighbors usually love our developments, our customers love our developments. So I hear you a little bit on the open space, but as far as with this plan and what we could do with the open space, I feel like we did a really, really nice job, and I think it'll be a beautiful neighborhood. But having said that, I, I get the thought on both sides, but I feel really good about what we came up with.
And I just want to, um, clarify something, just to make sure it's clear. The Fleming family intends to stay on the property. They intend to live there in their homes, and they intend to continue on with Shady Brook Farm in some capacity and continue to do the, the agretainment, uh, that we all know and love, correct?
Yeah, and I didn't just go into detail, because I know we talked about that a little bit, and, you know, Paul's come up a couple of times and talked through it, but no, uh, Dave and Samantha Fleming are literally going to be, um, one of the houses in the development, uh, just to the other side of the clubhouse, the one part that's kind of grayed out a little bit. So, no, the Shady Brook will still be a little bit smaller than what it was before, but Shady Brook will continue on, and if you see the plans of what they have with the agretainment, it, it could be a really special place.
Yeah, so I just, from my perspective, I mean, when we're talking about open space, I actually think, I don't think I know that this plan that's being proposed actually creates more open space than would the by-right plan, so that's, that's a net win, and we're not talking about the complete elimination of Shady Brook Farm. The Fleming family will continue to live there, and the farm will continue to operate.
Correct.
Other board members have questions, comments?
Mr. Kezak, I've been quiet tonight because, um, I wanted to hear the residents. This was a really important meeting, I think, to be able to hear, uh, the concerns that the folks most affected have about the plan. Um, as you remember, Mr. Morrissey was not as quiet in the last meeting, and I haven't been quiet over the last couple of months. Um, but, but what I did hear tonight is, um, a group of people that really educated themselves on the ins and outs of what the zoning laws in this township are, what's possible, and what the alternatives are. Um, and I also hear a group of people that really aren't that far apart, and that's what I hoped I would hear, and it's the major reason that I requested this to be a separate preliminary, um, from final land development vote. If you come to a lot of these, usually, our attorney friends and our developer friends like to bring preliminary and final at the same time, uh, which I think for a development this big is not appropriate. So I really appreciate you separating those out, and I think this preliminary vote should absolutely be considered that, a preliminary vote. We're going to watch and we're going to see about the puts and the takes. You talked about, you know, having some flexibility about where that road goes, about that final corner unit, you know, these are like punch list items. These are not, um, radical departures from one another. So I'm really encouraged and, uh, um, excited to see how this continues to evolve, because it did evolve a great deal from the last time we saw it. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you. I know you've, um, made a, a lot of concessions and you've worked with the residents, um, and I think this plan, uh, will benefit Middletown Township. I do, uh, would, I would like to see for, um, you know, a, a plan for the water runoff for the gentleman's property, and also for, um, Ted and Teresa, to make sure that they have, they have a lovely view. I've been to their home, it is a lovely view. I would hate for them to lose that, and, you know, if we can do something to, to make sure that that continues. Um, and the emergency access road, I completely agree. I would not, if I lived in the other neighborhood, I would not want emergency vehicles coming around. There are turns, and that, you're, you're not going to see the kids come out. Um, so I do agree with that, so, um, hopefully you can keep working on that.
Yeah, and with Sam Morelli in the Stormwater, we actually made the basin up by his property even bigger, just to make sure that we could take care of it, so we'll absolutely do that. And similar with Ted and Teresa, when we're at their house, we actually even went up to their second floor to look out, so we could kind of see the view of it, but I, I feel very confident we're, we're going to make them happy as well.
And about the, um, the path going by Mrs. White's property, um, if there's something that can be done so that her property is not as affected as well?
So what will end up happening is, if the emergency access goes from there to 777, assuming the fire marshal was, um, in agreement with that, then any kind of access or trail there would, would, would go away. So from that standpoint, it's, it's really more of a township decision than, than a developer decision.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, so, um, and our, our fire chief is not here this evening, so we can't have him weigh in on that, but, um, I think we've all had a chance to weigh in, and we've heard public comments, so I am ready to accept the motion if somebody has one.
I make a motion to grant the zoning change text amendment and preliminary fi, preliminary land development plan approval for the farm's edge at Shady Brook, 927 Stony Hill Road, SLD 24-10, with the following conditions. One applicant shall comply in full with all requirements of the Middletown Township subdivision and land development ordinance and the Middletown Township zoning ordinance unless relief was granted by the body having jurisdiction. Two, any remaining review comments shall be addressed in full. Three, emergency access road to be addressed at Chilton Place with fire and emergency services. And four, the roadway traffic and signal improvements approved by Lower Makefield Township.
I'll second, and I just want to thank Ms. Strauss for including in the motion those conditions, specifically the one regarding, uh, the emergency access road and improvement by Lower Makefield of the traffic improvements. But I hope that that expresses our desires as a board to, um, continue to work and work with residents to improve this plan, um, to get it as good as it can be. So, uh, there's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions at this time from the public? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed?
Aye.
Carries 4-1. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate all your time. Thank you.
And thank you to all the residents who came out, uh, to provide public comment. All right, next on the agenda, we have a discussion of chicken ordinance. Mr. Ennis.
Good evening. Um, you have my, uh, May 22nd, uh, memo in your packets, and as you know, probably for the last couple of years now, that there's been a contingent of the township that has been requesting for less restrictive requirements when it comes to keeping and raising in chickens on residential properties, probably better described as, you know, backyard chickens, recreational chickens, chickens as pets. Uh, right now, they, uh, the chickens and how they're basically the requirements that are involving chickens, they're treated as an agricultural use. Uh, they are only allowed in the low-density, uh, residential zoning districts, primarily the, the residence agricultural zoning districts, the RA1, the RA2, and the RA3. Um, even furthermore, you need a minimum lot size of five acres to even have a chicken. Uh, probably, what, around the time of the COVID stay-at-home order, the keeping of chickens on residential properties, like, if backyard chickens really ramped up, I know it predates me as far as the building and zoning director here, but that was also common in other communities, uh, even the one that I worked in prior to here. Uh, so we did a little investigation as far as figuring out how the requirements are treated in other communities, uh, we, as in myself, and also the Township Solicitors' Office, and, uh, yes, I, I would agree that it's, it's pretty restrictive right now. They are treated as an agricultural use. There's really no flexibility for them to be backyard chickens. However, we've also, even though there's a contingent out there that is requesting this, believe me, working out of the B&amp;Z department, we get a lot of complaints, so there's probably as many people that do not want to have chickens in their backyard as neighbors. Uh, so we did look into everything, and I'm just going to get right now into the considerations and suggestions part of my memo. I, I have four points. Uh, first point is, I think from what I, my experience or from my standpoint, and also kind of keeping in with the agricultural part of the RA zoning districts, that that's probably the zoning district that would make the most sense, the RA1, the RA2, and the RA3 in your community. I know that a lot of the people that are requesting these chickens are more in the R1 and R2 zoning districts, the more higher-density zoning districts with smaller lot sizes, but it, I think there could be some real issues there if you were to allow them in, in those zoning districts. Uh, if you were to allow them in those zoning districts, I think it should be through a special exception approval process, meaning they would have to go before the zoning hearing board. Not, as not a variance, not looking for zoning relief, like, as if they would have to now, but still going, throwing the zoning hearing board, still requesting a special exception approval, and then through that special exception approval, there could be specific, you know, context-sensitive, uh, conditions established through that hearing process. That's if you were to consider them on the R1 and R2, the lower-density zoning districts. Uh, I still think it's going to be a strain on your township resources, especially your staff. Uh, it already is, as far as through enforcement, um, but I think it's still going to be as much so through the permitting if you were to allow them, and also the monitoring, and also some kind of annual inspection process that would have to be put into place and everything else. And so then lastly, I, you know, as your governing body, uh, you would have to really consider, i, is this truly something that's necessary for your community? Is this something that actually will benefit your community? I know I kind of really just rushed through my memo there, um, but, you know, open to any, uh, questions or input.
Um, thank you, Mr. Ennis. I'm, I'm going to suggest that the board not take any action, um, tonight. I think you've given us a lot of information, and I think probably the best strategy is to let everybody think about it. Um, but does anybody have any questions or comments they want to make tonight?
Um, with it going through the zoning process, are there any other communities that have that, uh, process in place, and what does that look like?
Good question. I don't know right now. I didn't actually investigate, I just kind of investigated the dimensional kind of requirements of other communities and everything else, as far as lot size and everything else. I didn't really see if they actually allow them from special conception or not, or if they're actually a by right, so to speak, you just go for a permit, as long as you meet some other requirements that would be designed, uh, even if they're allowed in the, uh, residence agricultural zoning district, you know, setbacks and size of the actual chicken coop and that sort of thing, and number of chickens. Um, I just think, from my experience, the special exception process would probably be best for, say, if you were going to allow them in the R1 and R2. I think it's, it, it also allows for more of a, you know, a, a process where the neighboring property owners will get notified, they get to actually have some input. It's actually, there's a lot of consideration there for the zoning hearing board to, to chew on, if you actually put them through that process.
So they would be allowed to come out and speak about it if, if it was to go through that process?
Right, and I think, honestly, that process would also kind of vet out the ones that aren't very good at keeping and raising chickens and those that are. You know, that, that, that's the thing, there's, there's, as much as there's probably some really conscientious chicken owners out there right now, and there's also, and, and again, in my experience at the B&amp;Z department, a lot of people that are not very, uh, they're kind of careless with keeping their chickens, and they do create nuisance and, and property maintenance issues.
What does the enforcement look like if they're not being good chicken farmers?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's where it gets really difficult, right? If you were to allow them in, say, the smaller zoning districts, meaning the, the, the higher-density zoning district, smaller lot size, um, I think it's still going to be a problem. I think there's going to be a lot of people that are just going to go ahead and get the chickens, not go through the special exception process, and we're still going to have some enforcement issues. I think it's actually going to open the door to even more enforcement issues, because I think once people start hearing that those chickens are allowed in the community, I think you're just going to have some people just putting them right there in their backyard the next day. Uh, enforcement right now is, is pretty difficult. We get calls almost, actually, I will say this, probably this year it's died down a little bit, but since I've been here the last couple of years, we definitely would get a call the minute that someone had a chicken, and then a code enforcement in my office would have to go out, say, you have the cease to do that, or you can try to appeal in front of the zoning hearing board and get a variance. Um, but then we have seen some, some cases where, where it's, you know, the, the fecal matter and road in Harbridge, and just the, the keeping has been really in poor shape, uh, very careless.
We took this up a few years ago, and we had a, there was a good memo at the time that surveyed the surrounding townships and communities and, um, what their chicken policies were, and I was surprised who, like, I think, I don't want, I don't want to speak, but like Falls is pretty dense, and they allow chickens much more liberally than we do.
Yes.
Um, so we should resurrect that memo, A, and B, um, I'm relatively reluctant to encourage this to flow through the zoning hearing board. I actually tend to think we send too much through the zoning hearing board already in terms of, like, sheds on pre-existing, um, what do you call those? Pre-existing, um, problematic lots. Um, I think we need to take more of that off of, um, off of the zoning hearing board's plates. However, maybe explore some sort of paper-based application process, where you notify the neighbors, you have to look at the lot size, and then they get a stamped approval for, you know, six chickens or whatever it is, right? Maybe there's some sort of other process where we get that same level of oversight without dragging people to an evening meeting. It's just something to consider.
Yeah, absolutely.
With the neighbor notification.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot to consider, and I mean, this is very much in its infancy, depending on the direction you want to take. Um, but to, to your point, uh, in the memo, uh, I do point out that Northampton and Falls both allow them, allow them a lot, uh, more restrictive, so forth. Falls, I would say, is probably, in my opinion, the better direction, and if you wanted to go that route, uh, it's Northampton, I think that is very, very lenient, uh, pretty much allowed in every zoning district.
Yeah, Northampton allows it, uh, they changed, they updated the ordinance at the end of last year to pretty much allow it everywhere. Uh, Falls Township, I believe they lowered it to a half an acre. Uh, and, and both of them do have still a lot of, uh, conditions, if you are going to keep any, and, and, and certain, uh, percentages, but, um, uh, but those are the two that kind of allow them. There's a couple of boroughs that pretty much allow them everywhere, but that's almost because they have to, because all lots are small in, in boroughs. But most other municipalities the size of Middletown, uh, are pretty similar to, to Middletown's restrictive, uh, five acres right now. Not saying that we stay at that, I'm just saying there are a lot of townships that have that restriction.
Have we spoke to Falls or Northampton to see what their insight has been?
I have not, as far as actual enforcement issues and, and what it's like to actually, especially for Northampton, who, like I said, is very lenient, very flexible. Uh, back to what Jim pointed out there, with, with Falls, where a half an acre, that's actually the minimum lot size roughly of the RA3. So that's, that's where I was going at, is where we would, um, I would probably emphasize, like, you want to probably not go into the low, the higher-density zoning districts, keep it in the lower-density residential zoning districts.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Appreciate it.
No problem.
To be continued, for sure.
That's right.
All right, next on the agenda is consideration of enacting ordinance number 25-04, which is the, uh, Stormwater Advisory Committee. Mr. Valla.
Yes, good evening supervisors. Um, as we discussed at your June 9th meeting, uh, you guys advertised an ordinance to establish a permanent stormwater advisory committee. Um, as we discussed previously, there was an ad hoc or a temporary committee who investigated the feasibility of the stormwater fee, uh, they ultimately acted upon that recommendation. The other recommendation that committee made last year was to create a permanent advisory committee to, um, essentially be the landing point for, uh, feedback or issues from residents about stormwater issues. Uh, they would be part of the, formally part of the appeal process for anybody who has, um, a, who's contesting the calculation of their stormwater fee, as we heard earlier this evening, um, and also providing some long-term oversight and guidance to future stormwater improvements, um, using the proceeds of the stormwater impact fee. Um, so it would be, uh, if you guys are moving forward with the ordinance tonight, it contemplates a five-member board appointed to three-year terms, um, and because this is being created for the first time, uh, you would be tasked with, uh, appointing folks at staggered terms. So one for a term ending at the end of 2025, two members ending at, uh, 2026, and two more members, uh, with terms expiring at 2027.
Thank you, Mr. Valla. Um, any questions, or I can consider a motion?
I move to enact ordinance 25-04, establishing a stormwater advisory committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then a motion to the second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none of those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed? Carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Valla. All right, so next on the agenda is consideration of actually appointing members to the newly-created Stormwater Advisory Committee. Um, so we, uh, had agreed previously that we would, uh, this would be a five-member board, um, and in order to stagger the terms, we'll appoint one member to a one-year term, two members to two-year terms, and two members to three-year terms. Um, I am, um, pleased and thrilled to say that we had, um, so many applicants from so many qualified people. Um, it's actually unfortunate that we could not appoint everyone who applied, because, um, we, we got some really, really great applications, um, and for anybody who does not get appointed tonight, I would encourage you to stay engaged, uh, because, uh, openings will come up in the future for this committee, but we also have other opportunities in the community, in the township, uh, other boards and commissions that, uh, folks can serve on, so, um, you know, we're, we're thrilled to have, uh, people that are so interested and engaged and, and wanting to volunteer. So, um, let's, um, move forward with, uh, appointments. I guess, Mr. Esposito, can we just do all these at once or do we need to go one by one?
Well, you need to specify which ones are going to have the one-year term, two-year term, and three-year term.
All right. So I will first, I will nominate Joe Fitch to a one-year term on the Stormwater Advisory Committee. Mr. Fitch is a 50-plus-year township resident. Mr. Fitch lives in an area that I would say is uniquely affected by stormwater. He has served on the Stormwater Advisory Board that helped initially investigate this issue. For those who pay attention to our meetings, he's a, he's a frequent attendee and often comes to discuss stormwater issues, and I think he'll be an active and engaged member of the committee. So I nominate Joe Fitch to a one-year term. Is there a second?
I'll second. I agree, having someone that is personally impacted by the stormwater, I think is going to be important to be on that committee, to bring that personalization of the impact.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Carries 5-0. Congratulations and thank you to Mr. Fitch. Okay, so now we have two folks to appoint to two-year terms. I will, let's see, I will nominate Russ Hartman to a two-year term. Mr. Hartman is a Penn State Master Watershed Steward. He's got experience in riparian buffers, stream health, stormwater management. He's got a bachelor's from LaSalle and a master's from Rutgers, and I think he'll be a great addition to the Stormwater Advisory Committee. Is there a second for Mr. Hartman?
Second.
I think I agree that having someone that has a, you know, an education and experience
in wastewater and management is going to be key.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Carries 5-0. Next, I will move to appoint Chris Hawkeye to a two-year term. Mr. Hawkeye has lived in the township for over 30 years. He is a Temple University graduate. He worked for the engineering firm Panone for over 20 years doing municipal work, including stormwater management, and he currently works for the Morrisville Municipal Authority. So again, another individual who I think is uniquely qualified and will be a great addition to the committee. Is there a second to appoint Chris Hawkeye for a two-year term?
Second.
I'll second.
I think Ms. Hannah got it in. Been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Carries 5-0. So now we need to appoint two people to three-year terms. I will, I will nominate John Flammer to a three-year term. Mr. Flammer has lived in the township for over 25 years. Mr. Flammer actually worked for the United States Geological Survey and for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection as an environmental scientist. He's got a BS from Drexel, an MS from Virginia Tech, and he also served in both the US Army and the Army Reserve. Another gentleman with great qualifications who I think will be a great member of this committee. Is there a second for Mr. Flammer?
I'll second Colonel Flammer.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Carries 5-0. And finally, I will nominate Andrew McElhoun to a three-year term. Mr. McElhoun has served this township in many ways. He's been our, on our environmental advisory committee for many years. He's lived in the township for 40 years. He, he's himself a registered professional engineer. He's got a bachelor's in civil engineering from Villanova and an MBA from Robert Morris University. And again, another individual who I think is uniquely qualified and will be a great member of the Stormwater Advisory Committee. Is there a second to appoint Mr. McElhoun to a three-year term?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Carries 5-0. Okay, so I want to congratulate and sincerely thank Mr. Fitch, Mr. Hartman, Mr. Flammer, Mr. Hawkeye, and Mr. McElhoun for applying and volunteering to serve on the Stormwater Advisory Committee. We look forward to your good work in helping the township understand its stormwater needs and prioritizing stormwater projects and how best to utilize the funds that will be generated. So thank you again to, to all those individuals. And thank you again to everybody who applied. As I said, we had so many applications, it was really overwhelming. Everybody in some way or another had qualifications that would have been beneficial. So this wasn't a scenario where, you know, there were people that were applying that weren't qualified. Everybody was. So thank you to everybody for your interest. We're really pleased and appreciate it. Any other comments, questions, or anything anybody wants to say regarding stormwater? Any members of the public with any comments? Oh, sorry, Ms. Corporal.
Sorry, I haven't been too, I just wanted to say I was really impressed with all of the applications that we got and how well qualified everybody was. It was, it was definitely difficult, and I would encourage everybody that didn't get picked to, you know, keep being involved and, you know, there's, like you said, other positions, and some of these positions are going to be opening up. So, no, we want the, we want the participation and we're thrilled to see it. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Corporal. Any public comment regarding the Stormwater Advisory Committee? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is consideration of entering into a new collective bargaining agreement with the Middletown Crossing Guards Association. Mr. Valla?
Yes. Good evening once again. Before you tonight is a new collective bargaining agreement with the Crossing Guards Association. They are currently ending a four-year collective bargaining agreement. They are organized here in Middletown Township. They are fully employees of Middletown Township, but it is important to note, half of the total cost of their wages is shared with, equally with the Neshamity School District. Before you tonight, the contract contains a four-year term and 4% wage increases, and everything else that is changed is essentially just some language changes, nothing that really has a monetary value associated with it. We are projecting the total cost of the four-year contract to be $32,000. And again, that $32,000 would be split equally with the school district over the term of that four years.
Thank you, Mr. Valla. Any questions for Mr. Valla? If not, I can accept a motion.
I move to approve the collective bargaining agreement between Middletown Township and the Crossing Guards Association for a term of January 1, 2026 to December 31, 2029.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Valla. Next on the agenda, consideration of awarding the fuel bid. Mr. Gartner?
Good evening, board members. In front of you is our annual fuel bid. We participate in a Bucks County consortium bid every year. It's kind of a housekeeping item. This year, you know, in May, we sent out all the paperwork and all the things necessary, the bid on this, it came back, and we're back to petroleum traders again. It's usually a flip-flop every year, every two years. So this is for the diesel, for the gas, and the home heating fuel that we, that's what this contract's for. Excuse me.
And the funds for this were allocated in there?
Yes, they are allocated every year in the budget for each one of those items.
Any questions for Mr. Gartner? If not, I can accept a motion.
I move to award the 2025-2026 Fuel Consortium Contract to Petroleum Traders Corp. of Fort Wayne, Indiana for unleaded gasoline with an estimated amount of $270,000, and those sold for diesel with an estimated amount of $85,000. Part, parts petroleum of Worcester, Ohio for heating fuel with an estimated amount of $25,000 on an as-needed basis.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Gartner.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing the purchase and installation of access systems for a community park. Mr. Graham?
Good evening. Parks and Recreation Department began a project to install new security measures at Community Park in the fall of last year as a part of our capital improvement plan. The first phase allowed us to install security cameras and access control systems to the barn, which is our department's main recreation facility for programming and classes. These measures have improved, have proven to be extremely valuable in managing the, the building and preventing any unauthorized access. So for 2025, in our capital improvement plan, there was $80,000 budgeted to continue to improve the security in Community Park. For this year, our department is recommending installing access control measures to the remaining buildings in the park, which are two concession stands and a storage garage. These facilities house public bathrooms and important utility and parks' maintenance equipment. This is the same system that exists now at the barn and would be installed at nine doors throughout the park. The system allows us to set up user profiles for staff and volunteer personnel who have access to specific doors, and we're able to provide them with a swipe card or access via a Bluetooth connectivity app in order to access the, the facilities. We're able to monitor the building access and receive alerts when doors are propped open or entered at times that are not authorized. We're able to limit exposure to potential vandalism, and overall, it creates better efficiency for our staff. So we're able to monitor these things remotely as opposed to always sending a staff member over to the park. As a part of this, we're also recommending the, deferring the purchase of new cameras to the park for this year, to 2026, that was originally budgeted for this year. We're working on reviewing some new technologies with our vendor that may prove to fit our needs better. We're just waiting on some more information on that at this time. So that will bring the cost of this project to a total of $50,458.59 for 2025, to be purchased through EAW Security, which is the same vendor we used for the barn last year, and they are a CoStarz vendor. So our department is asking for permission to proceed with this project, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Any questions?
I just have one quick question. Since you're splitting the project up like this, which completely fine, the purchase of this security system, does it lock us into particular hardware for the cameras next year, or do we retain flexibility?
Yeah, not particularly. This, this is just for the doors. We do have a camera system that we installed last year at the barn that we would like to continue with throughout the rest of the park and potentially through other parks in the township. The reason for waiting was we're reviewing a couple of products, one of which is a solar product that we may be able to, it would prevent us from having to do trenching for electric and things like that in certain areas, so that was part of the reason why for that. Also with this install, it is also setting up the ability to add cameras to these same buildings. They're going to be installing a technology that will route the internet from the barn to the concession stands and the garage in order to be set up for, for cameras going forward.
Great. I move to execute an agreement with EAW Security for the purchase and installation of access control systems at Middletown Community Park totaling $50,458.59.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing the purchase of a drug prevention and mobile community outreach vehicle. Chief?
Good evening once again, Mr. Kiesak and board members. So the Police Department is requesting your approval for the purchase of a new vehicle that will serve as a drug prevention and mobile community outreach unit. And the purpose of this unit is twofold, to provide a mobile platform for community-based prevention and education, to expand the department's presence and accessibility at schools, community events, and public gatherings. The unit will be stocked with Narcan kits, Detera prescription drug destruction bags, and educational materials on topics such as the Good Samaritan Law and substance misuse and prevention. This vehicle will also serve as a transport hub for warm handoffs to treatment services, ensuring residents have immediate access to care and support when they most need it. The vehicle will be marked in such a way to encourage engagement with the community and will maintain a normal interior to reduce the stigma associated with a responder vehicle that transports someone to treatment. Additionally, it will serve as the mobile base for our DARE program, supporting the delivery of substance use education in our schools, including over-the-counter prescription and illicit drug awareness. From a budget standpoint, this will be fully funded by the township's opioid settlement fund grant with no impact to the general fund or capital fund. There is no request, Ms. Strauss, for additional personnel. An operational cost will be minimal, absorbed into our existing fuel and maintenance budgets. And I will add real fast that we currently have $123,000 in our opioid settlement fund grant. This is going to use about $53,000 of it. It's really the only plan that the Police Department has. We're still going to have $70,000 left over, and I know we've had those funds for quite a while. I think that it's imperative on us as a township to try to figure out ways to utilize that, the remaining funds to benefit our community. I know that it was suggested by our community relations officer, Melissa Robinson, that there are some really good recovery homes that operate in our township, Emily House being one of them, operated by the Kasingers, where we may be able to allocate like small funding amounts, like five or $10,000, to different recovery homes that do a real good job in our township. But if you, if you authorize the purchase of this, we're still going to have a significant amount of money left over after, you know, after this project. So anyway, other than that, you know, after we buy the vehicle, we are responsible for the operational costs. We're going to have to, you know, change the oil and do things like that, but that's minimal. We do believe this vehicle is a smart investment that aligns with the township's ongoing efforts to support public health, safety, meaningful community engagement and outreach. So if the board has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. I will say that I do have some numbers here. Since 2015 alone, police in Bucks County have initiated about 1,500 Narcan saves. And I know since 2010, our county really has a very successful prescription drug take-back program. We've collected over 200,000 pounds of unused prescription medication. So that's police Narcan saves. This will make naloxone available to the public and also portable prescription drug bags to discard prescription medication. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone have questions? I can accept a motion. I move to authorize the Police Department to proceed with the purchase and outfitting of a drug prevention and mobile community outreach vehicle with all the costs funded through the township's opioid settlement fund grant. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed. Carries 5-0. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the information regarding the opioid settlement funds that are going to be available. It's definitely something we need to, to look into.
I think the chief has the next item.
I think Captain Feeney's taking it. Yeah. Next on the agenda, consideration of authorizing the purchase of a police motorcycle. Captain Feeney?
Good evening. This evening, the Police Department is requesting authorization to purchase a 2025 Harley-Davidson Road King police motorcycle to replace a 2017 model, which has been in service since the fall of 2016. As you're all aware, we originally established the motor unit in 2016 with four 2017 model As you're all aware, we originally established the motor unit in 2016 with four 2017 model Harley-Davidson motorcycles. We still have two of those original motorcycles in service after nearly nine years. One of them has reached a point with mileage and use that it's in need of replacement. The other one is still pretty low miles for its age and can last us another year or two. So we're looking to replace that one motorcycle this year. The cost is $24,494.71. After the trade-in value of the 2017 model will be traded back in. Purchase made from Stars and Stripes Harley-Davidson. Gladly answer any questions if you have.
Any questions for Captain Feeney?
I move to authorize the Police Department to proceed with the purchase of a fully outfitted 2025 Harley-Davidson Road King police motorcycle from Stars and Stripes Harley-Davidson in the amount of $27,494.71.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. There's been a motion and a second. Any board questions? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Carries five zero. Thank you, Captain Feeney.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have our Q2 financial report. Ms. Hucklebridge.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, you guys love having me last because you're bright and fresh, ready for your financials. All right, we have our Q2 review. We're going to go through the overview, the general fund, capital fund, investment fund, and then take a look at the pensions. For our operating fund, we have revenues of $27.9 million so far. These are the operating funds that also include enterprise funds of the golf course and the country farm funds. So we have revenue of $27.9 million, expenses of $17.4 million. Historically, revenues through June have been around 64% of our annual revenues for the year, and expenses are around 36%, 37% for the year around June. So our expenses are going to continue to go up significantly, and the revenues are only going to grow a little bit more. So we had, we did budget a slight deficit in the beginning of the year. We're still tracking that way, even though right now we have a surplus of $10.4 million. This just shows the revenue by category, breaking out our taxes, the real property taxes, and the Act 511 taxes, total 56% so far for the year, and they make up about $15 million right now. The Act 511 taxes will continue to increase throughout the rest of the year, and they will total $15 million on their own by the end of the year. This breaks down our Q2 budget for the first column, Q2 actual in the middle, and Q2 2024 on the right. As you see, the revenues are all up at the top here because we've received most of our revenue in the month of April, as we have every year. Expenses, as I said, are around 39%, and they'll continue to go up. Our expenses are higher in Q2 of 2025 compared to 2024. We did have that tax refund to the Oxford Valley Mall, which was $363,000. That was a one-time expense, so that has increased expenses. Looking at just the general fund, which is our main fund, we have revenues of $12.6 million, which is about 51% for the year. We have expenses of $11.5 million, which is at 42%. Our revenues are on target for the year so far for the general fund. Expenses are trending a little bit higher, but we did have those one-time payments to Oxford Valley Mall and some other expenses that were pushed earlier in the year than later. Here's our chart of the revenue by month, and we've been historically for 2023, 24, 25, our revenues have been following the same pattern for January through June. We have a little funky there in August and September, but that would just be the timing of when we're recording our revenues. But we are on track with our historic and budget projections. Our expenses, most of our expenses are incurred between January and August. They're nice and smooth. That big spike in September that you see is the pension plan. It's the payments of the MMO, the municipal obligation for the pension plan, our contributions. So that's why September jumps up, because it's about $3.5 million. Our expenses for the month of June are a little higher. Again, we had some additional personnel costs through the year and the payments to Oxford Valley and some other expenses that have increased. The fund balance for the general fund is $11.3 million. That will cover just over five months' worth of expenses at the higher expense rate there, the $2.1 million, which is last year's average monthly expenses. In the capital fund, we did receive some grant funding so far. We received some reimbursements. These were for 2024 projects that had been completed and submitted. We had an RDA payment of $314,000 for the Public Works Vehicles, a PCCD grant for police car cameras, and the CDBG of $157,000. Our capital project spending is just ramping up for the year, so we will see this increase through Q3 and Q4. But we have spent so far $323,000 for the Police Department for their new vehicles, rifles, and other equipment, and $234,000 for Public Works Vehicles, the road program, engineering, and other projects. The fund balance in the capital fund is $3.6 million, was a decrease of $288,000 from the end of the year. We are looking forward to receiving some funding back for the Forsythia Crossing Program, the hockey rink, for $375,000. And Community Park, we should be getting another $61,000, hopefully next quarter. The investment fund, this is listing out our holdings that we have with our three banks. We had, the balance has increased $1.2 million. Last year, we did have a transfer of $2.4 million out of the investment fund into the capital fund. We do not have a budgeted transfer this year, so the balance will continue to grow for another year. Here's the value by quarter from 2022 through Q2 of 2025. The big spike in Q3, that was when our balance was the highest, and then it went down at the end of 2024. That was the transfer. But you'll see the ending dot there of Q2 2024 is about even to where we were at Q2 2024 versus 2025. We're about even where we were before we did that distribution. So the fund balance in the investment fund, right now, it had an increase of $1.2 million. It's at $41.3 million for Q2. The yield market was 4.02%. And we have our meeting with the, with PFM for the investment fund at the end of this month. For our pensions, we also have not had our quarterly meeting with the pension managers yet, but these are the numbers that I've been able to pull together prior to their report. For the police pension plan, the balance has increased $1.1 million from December, so we are covering our expenses. The non-uniform pension plan, we had a fund balance increase of $387,000 from December. So again, we're covering our expenses there of contributions, distributions. In review, we've collected $28 million. We've got expenses of $17 million, which will continue to increase through the end of the year. Our general fund balance is high enough to cover five months of expenses. Our capital projects are going to continue increasing now through the end of the year, and our investment fund and pension plan are doing well. Take any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Hucklebridge? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us into other business. I will start with Mr. Kessler.
Looking to add, thank you.
Mr. Valla.
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Esposito.
Just want to announce that the board did hold an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel and labor matters and a potential litigation matter.
Thank you. Mr. Ratliff, our new township manager, just completed his first meeting. Anything to add?
Yeah, thank you. I'll have to think about the last time I attended a public meeting and didn't say anything until the end. So happy to be here. Thank you again. Happy to be kind of in the middle of my first week. Really appreciate the township staff and how welcome they've been and how organized the onboarding process has been, and looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy to have you. Ms. Strauss.
Nothing, thanks.
Ms. Kane.